Board, I'll get there by next spring. I'll remember the new name. Um, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I kind of got a little rushed there. I want everyone to know we're available via Zoom, YouTube, NCTV, and live. Skipping a few things in order to get the important work done, but prior to the important work of Lieutenant Hines' pinning ceremony, we do have a public hearing notice that I'm going to read. I'm going to attempt to enunciate, but not dawdle. The public hearing notice is as follows. The Select Board for the Town of Norfolk will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Chapter 166, Section 22 of the Massachusetts General Laws on a petition from Verizon New England Incorporated and Eversource and Star Electric for joint pole location to grant petitioners joint or identical locations for the erection or construction of poles to be owned and used in common by them and for such other fixtures, including anchors and guys, as may be necessary to sustain or protect the wires of the line. Said poles to be located substantially as shown on the plans marked Verizon Number 1A4M3AT dated September 8th, 2021, filed herewith upon along and across the following public way or ways of said town Tucker Road, Place One jointly owned pole number T dot one half slash E dot one half on the southeast side of Tucker Road at a point approximately 32 feet northeasterly from the center line of Medway Street. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point upon each of said poles for the telephone, fire, and police signal wires owned by the town and used for municipal purposes. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 124, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., as well as via Zoom, online video conferencing, remote access. Norfolk Select Board, Carolyn Van Tyne Chair, Anita Mecklenburg Vice Chair, Karen Calcutt Clerk.
So with the pole location meeting open, I wanted to let you know that this pole is for a new pole to be inserted between two others because it's a long span. As we usually do, we set it to inspire public works for their input. The collective input is that they would like to see the pole further back from the street from where it was designed. That has been communicated to utilities and they have agreed they need to go back and redesign it. So we're not ready to take up the actual action tonight. We'd like you to approve the motion that's in your packet to be due here until December 7.
Do I have a motion? Or do it there? Are there any questions? I don't have any. There will be a quiz on what I read later.
Just as an aside, this has nothing to do with the item that was brought to our attention by the owner of Norway Farms, right, identifying that there was a pole that apparently wasn't, looked like it was new, but wasn't balanced in the right way. This has nothing to do with that, right? Okay. Thank you. That's my only question.
That was a good one because I was confused by that. I move that the board vote to continue the public hearing for the pole location on Tucker Road to December 7th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to skip COVID-19 updates. We'll come back to that and public comment and go right to number four. Right?
So it's wonderful to have an event like this again. It's been way too long since we have. As you know, you recently approved the contract for Sergeant Hines become Lieutenant Hines, which he began those duties a little bit earlier in October. But it's typical in public safety to have a pinning ceremony, and so that's what we're here to do tonight. He's here with his family and obviously very well represented by family and coworkers and colleagues. And so I'd suggest that he come up with who he'd like to pin his badge on and the town board officially swear him in for everybody and just enjoy the event.
Raise your right hand. Do you, Timothy Hines solemnly swear and affirm to faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent on you as a police lieutenant for the Town of Norfolk to the best of your ability and according to the laws and the Constitution, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws that a town of Norfolk, so help you God.
I do.
It's a sought-after item. So it's kind of a big deal that everybody's pretty excited about.
So do they like bring food and cake and stuff for us now?
No, not for us.
Congratulations, Ted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I think that'd be great. Put you on the spot again. Look at them. They're like, oh.
This is my wife Jean, Holly, and my younger ally. I'd just like to say my, uh, my family, my brother, my brother Mike is here. Assistant Law Denise, Assistant Law Karen. And everyone else from another time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for coming. Support's overwhelming. Thank you.
That is so funny. Thank you. I would never have thought I'd have to do so much.
You should do these more often. This is way better than dog hearing.
And I haven't had that much of a robust pledge of allegiance in a while.
Can you imagine if every meeting had this many people in it though?
As we start talking about funding for large projects.
And they'll be this happy. They'll be so happy.
I feel like that's the difference, right? Even if you had a crowded room.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. It's the mood too that. I miss Bobby. I was looking at it. I was like, Joe, it's good to see you. Seen him in the suburbs. I'm so used to seeing him. I didn't think anything of it. And also I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah. You didn't last opportunity for a little while.
So we're sharing? Sharing is caring?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just, that's fine. I like to share.
There's one right here, but we had a.
This one's got a lot of slack on it. You could probably move this one down to the chair. And everything slides down from there.
Oh, he's a problem solver. Nice job. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
So just wait till they close the door.
Maybe just let them know that we're.
Or they can, I mean, we could chat quietly. Or close the door. Thank you. All right. So I guess what makes the most sense to now go back? Sure. Beginning, but then skip number four when we get to it. So COVID updates.
Short and sweet. Our COVID number of cases are 1,158 as of last Thursday, and our 14-day average is 7.4. We continue to be low in the county and in the state and having a, you know, six or so cases each new each week, which wish there weren't any, but glad that they're minimal. So things are going well. I don't have really anything else to get to cover.
Outstanding. Any questions?
No, they've approved the vaccination of children. I'm very excited by that.
Absolutely.
Very exciting. ASAP. I think it was approved today.
They can start tomorrow. Yeah.
Yeah, it was approved today.
Public comment. Does anybody here for public comment? Anybody?
Raised hands.
And I raised hands. Well, I see NCTV is talking. Is that?
That's just you.
Oh, it's me. We could do it again. It did again. We could do this all night. We're going to get people to tune in whether it kills, if it kills us. So seeing no public. Sorry. I couldn't. This is the first time. I feel like, no, really? I just have never really looked. Well, that's probably right. So I'm just going to look at Karen Riley's dog and the coat because I like the coat. So, all right, no public comments. I'm not going to look a gift horse in the mouth and dilly-dally for long on that one. Then I'm going to move on to number five.
Number five is a request by SRT Convenience Incorporated to change the name of the Norfolk Food Mart to Liquor World. This process is one where the state ABCC requires a local approval of a name change. And so in your packet is all the paperwork plus a little extra that was submitted by them. There's no change of ownership or anything about the business. Once it's approved by the town, it's accepted, it's turned into the state. They don't take any action on it. They just want to know that at the local level, the board as licensing authority is, accepts the change. So in the audience is the owner, Mr. Raval. Is that your? Yep. To answer any questions that the board has. Is your attorney planning to be present? So I did check in with Mr. Raval's attorney over the weekend just to understand because there was some community comment about the name. And he confirmed that there, I said, is no corporate change, that this, Mr. Raval's a part, is a owner in a group that has Liquor Worlds and three other communities. And so this would just bring that same name to one of the businesses that they own here in Norfolk.
Just reading through. So is there anything that you would like to come up and address the board about sort of a little background reasons, any information that you'd like us to have? You just need to use the microphone. You can sit, you could sit in the audience with that mic, like.
Or you can sit in a comfy chair.
Or you can sit in a comfy chair with one of the fancier mics. It's really up to you.
So reason we are changing is I've been there for that location more than 10, 15 years with the same name, but market has been changed. We used to have meats and which, you know, daily grocery. And we noticed over the period, like so much stuff expired. We don't get credit. So we just end up dumping to the dumpster and not too many customers shopping in a small store. So we just tried to get that and with the town help, I think Mr. Winslow was here as a town representative. He helped me to get the licenses for the full liquor. And we tried to divert the customer towards the full liquor. And so I think that's the right way to get approach without not losing any money on the grocery side and the food and everything. And when customers drive by, some customer get upset, says, oh, you have a Norfolk food, but you have nothing inside. So it's like a wrong impression for customer to not to upset anyone. But nothing changed as inside. We changed everything renovation like five, six years ago to the floor shelving, everything else. But nothing changing as ownership.
Okay. I have no questions. Do you have any questions? No?
The only question I had, I think you just answered. One of the liquor stores that we go to every once in a while in Milis.
For other, for other people.
Yeah, for other people, exactly. I transitioned over to a Liquor World title. And with that transition, there was a lot done on the inside in terms of shelving and stock and offerings. Are you identifying that that wouldn't necessarily be the case in this?
So I've been working with my landlord for six months. I would like to take over the next store and expand the store. But I think at the last point I had, it is waiting for the town. They were telling me about store line one dimension.
The wastewater master plan, correct?
I don't know where I stand on the next purpose.
Very good. Gotcha. Thank you. It's the only question I had.
It's a good one. Just from, you know, apocryphal experience, just people talk. So I don't have any, anything more. Thank you for that. So now we. Well, I'll go first. You know, I'm a proud capitalist and it makes total sense to me to identify for the folks who are passing by what it is that you actually sell inside the store. And to the extent that it dates me, remember David Letterman? He used to have this skit where he would go, or stick, I guess it wasn't a skit, where they would go to a store that was just bulbs. Say it, just bulbs. And he would go in and ask for frying pans, things that weren't bulbs. And then he would go to just lamps, whatever. It was hilarious at 1:00 in the morning in college. But it's true that to the extent that if you are Liquor World, I would imagine that people who would want liquor, not that, well, I would. I don't speak to anyone else. I would be like, that's where I'm going to go to get my liquor. And so as a, as a capitalist, I think that that's just great. And so I have no opinion other than thanks for continuing to invest in the town and hope to expand. And so that's my opinion. That's just me.
I, I agree. If I was in business, I would want to attract the customers to my store. I know there was some chatter about the rustic nature of Norfolk and that it was, seemed a little less, less poetic maybe than some people would like. But I understand that from a marketing point of view, it's very clear what you're selling in your store. And there's a real advantage to that, to the. Oh, that place I do go to.
So I have no objections. I think that's great.
Just we appreciate you doing business with us, being a business partner for the town, and we hope that it continues to go on for much, much longer. Thank you.
So I guess, right, I gotta go back to the cheat sheet, flipping back and forth. So is there a motion?
I move that the board approve an application from SRT Convenience Incorporated to change their ZBA from Norfolk Food Mart to Liquor World.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six.
Number six is, as you know, there have been for a little while two openings for associate members on the zoning board of appeals. These are one-year positions where those, those folks who serve that, in that role can act on some matters depending on, on a matter in the quorum. Recently, the ZBA had received two applications. One from a gentleman named Tyler Tullos, who's sitting in the audience, and one from Courtney, thank you, Starling, who is joining us by Zoom. They have both been to the ZBA to meet with them. And in your packet are letters from the ZBA chair recommending that both be appointed. So they're here to answer any questions or any dialogue the board would like to have before considering their appointments, which would both be through the end of June of 2022. It's a little short because of we're so, we're into the fiscal year. Then it could be, if they are appointed, it could be considered to be extended after that.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll have them speak in a second. But am I, do I have? This, the letters, we have a letter. And it seems like it's the exact same letter to the extent that even the last sentence has the gender the same.
I didn't read them as closely. What, this is what we've received directly from the ZBA.
I just wasn't sure if there was like, if they meant to send the same letter or.
That's a very good question.
Diverse planning background, extensive experience in affordable housing. Diverse planning background with extensive experience in affordable housing. I guess we're going to find out if they both have an extensive, diverse background in affordable housing. Crazy if that's the case, but.
Their, their applications are in your packet as well. That might, I'm going to guess that Ms. Starling is the person referring to, and that's being seconded by Mr. Tullos in the audience.
Right. Okay. Well, I mean, I don't know. Maybe he just was hiding his light under a bushel about the extensive diverse background in affordable housing. But from the standpoint that, right, the.
Yep.
It doesn't matter. So the first in time or in my packet is Tyler Tullos. Is that you? So I guess we'll go first with that and we'll get to whichever. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, I, um, so last time, actually, the roles were reversed. I believe Ms. Starling was here in person and I was actually out of town. And so I tuned in on Zoom. And I think what I shared on Zoom got a little bit lost over the internet connection from Charleston. So I wanted to come tonight and just introduce myself personally. I'm Tyler Tullis. I'm a Norfolk resident. And out of the two of us, I was going to, I was going to say, and I only heard a little bit of Courtney, what she shared on Zoom. But if it was just like one spot on this for volunteer, that's a very easy choice. Like I'm saying, this is really zero competition. I'm just making that abundantly clear. But what I, what I, my interest in being a part of the zoning board as a volunteer and assistant or whatever the role or title is, was that I'm just a vested person in this town. I'm raising four children here, own three properties here, run two businesses and all in one town. And so I care about what happens here and I see myself here for the long haul. And so I just, I, I want to be a part of that process. And from, you know, what I see, this volunteer sort of position was one that came available and seemed like a way for me to be able to do that here in Norfolk. So I'm amongst other things, a licensed real estate broker in Massachusetts. So I don't have as extensive, or what was, what did the letter say?
A diverse planning background with extensive experience in affordable housing.
I don't have that. So that's, you know. But from time to time zoning, things do come into question. And, you know, it comes down to a matter of reading, understanding, interpreting. And I do have some experience doing that. Not nearly as expansive as what it sounds like Ms. Courtney does here. But I'd love the, the chance to help and be, be further vested in the town of Norfolk. That's my, my hope for, for this appointment.
Now, do you, you said, probably should have done it, four children, three businesses, two homes. That would have been more, would have flown more nicely from a mathematical standpoint. I'm just.
Well, it was four children, three properties, two businesses.
Oh, I got it backwards. So you.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, one town. I actually, I actually practiced that one. So.
So my bad. You did, you did it nicely. I just wrote it down wrong.
That's okay.
Four children, three properties, two businesses.
Yes, ma'am.
One town.
Yes.
What are your three businesses?
So the two businesses are.
Two businesses. I'm not ever, I will forever now know.
No, that's okay.
It was a diverse background with three businesses.
Yes. So Story Heights Montessori, right here around the corner. And then the other is a real estate investment business right on Rockwood, or right over the train tracks there. And those are two of the three properties too. So the businesses and the properties kind of go hand in hand.
And then the third is your residence.
Yeah, where we.
And have you had any, any opportunities to come before the ZBA? Or have you ever interacted with the town?
So not personally, we've, through the, the business on Rockwood, the property on Rockwood, we've gone through the site, with the planning board, the site plan approval process. And so that's our, our first, I guess, town process that we've gone through. In opening the business, the Montessori, we were obviously involved with the building department and the inspection department, Mr. McCarthy and those guys getting things approved. That Board of Health with the septic thing, you know, all that, all that sort of stuff. So we've worked with a lot of those guys in, for personal business ventures, personal properties that we own, but then also with numerous clients and such over the course of the years.
Thank you.
Anita? No, I appreciate your desire to support your town and admire that. And it's nice to meet you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
So thank you for your offer to, you know, give your time to the town, especially in this capacity. Typically, when somebody gets involved, right, they're coming with a reason, something that's driving them to want to get involved. Everybody has like their, their hallmark purpose for joining a board or a committee. Do you have one of those in terms of joining the ZBA? Is there something that you're extremely passionate about that you're looking to have an impact on from this committee?
So yes, the answer is yes. And, but I'm not entirely sure if it goes directly through the ZBA. I think they're probably go hand in hand. But what I've seen through the town website is, I forget what they called it. But basically, the way I watch it was like a vision for the town of Norfolk was like a, I think that's more through the planning board than the zoning board of appeals. But I watched that video and I see all of the potential things that they've shown. And, and to me, that looks like a town that I would love to live in. I love the town that I live in now, but all of those things, they seem like they would be great additions and great improvements to the town. And as someone who is, is, you know, I hope this doesn't sound arrogant, but as vested here as I am, I want, you know, I want to do what I can, even if it's maybe through an alternative channel, to, to see that vision really come to pass. What I feel like one of my greatest attributes is, or, you know, things I'm the most skilled at is, is bringing things together and keeping things together so that a, a vision can be, can be seen or, you know, a goal can be reached or accomplished. And so I, I know that the zoning board of appeals is not so much on the planning side as the, you know, hearing of presentations and that sort of thing. But I feel like that would be experience that I could gain and then potentially further serve in other places in years to come.
Absolutely. And it's also a component to the ZBA, which would be reviewing comprehensive permit applications that would help to shape some of that growth that you're describing.
Correct. Correct.
So there's definitely an aspect of that. So.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you.
You said, and forgive me, like, I don't know, was this, there was one meeting that I missed. Maybe it was this one. And maybe I was actually here in which case, sorry about that. You said that things got lost in translation or there was a problem with communicate. Like what happened the last time that was an issue with you being on Zoom? Was it, was it like a? the last time that was an issue with you being on Zoom? Was it, was it like a, it got cut out, or what?
I think it was a connectivity thing, and honestly, it was most of the answer that I just gave to your question, that the, and I forget the gentleman's name, but he, the way that he responded made me think that it did not, it wasn't clearly communicated, because he was like, well, we heard something about something, but, you know, and he was asking more of a question than a responding to my answer. So that was what made me think that it might not have come across clear.
Oh, you're talking, when you were talking with the ZBA or here?
No, no, it wasn't here.
Oh, okay. I, that's, so I was like, I don't remember.
No, 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 ma'am, that wasn't, that wasn't here. That was when the, the applications were presented to the ZBA.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything, well, I think you have any more? Okay. Should we just talk to both of them and then do the voting? All right. So now, Ms. Starling.
Hello?
Hi. Why don't you tell us about your diverse planning background with extensive experience in affordable?
Here, I need to see this letter, put it on LinkedIn. Sounds pretty good. My name's Courtney Starling. I live at 76 Union Street. I guess I'll start with your first question, which is, why are you interested? This is kind of funny, because that's usually one of my first questions to a board. And usually, it's like a answer like, a Dunkin' Donuts got built, and I couldn't believe it. What brings me to the zoning board of appeals is that I actually like zoning, which is not the most common, but I like the work of the zoning board of appeals. I think both affordable housing and 40B permitting is, while it's a challenge, it's also an opportunity. I also like the legal aspect of the board of appeals and dealing with non-conformities and appeals of building permits and things of that nature that are a little bit more regulatory in nature. I'm a planner by trade, and so I already do a lot of the planning board style work in my current job, and so board of appeals is just a little extra fun, apparently. I was filling out the application, and it said, why do you want to do this? And I was just like, should I just put that I'm a glutton for punishment, apparently? But, but that's, that's what brings me here. As far as my background, like I said, I am a planner by trade. I am currently the land use director for the town of Dover. Prior to coming to Dover, I was a consultant for better part of the last decade. As the letter said, I do specialize in affordable housing. I also do zoning, open space, and some economic development work, and these days I do a lot of grant writing for infrastructure. Prior to consulting, I was a regulatory planner for the town of Brookline, and I also worked for the town of Shelburne in Vermont. So I've kind of worked the transect from, you know, pretty rural to pretty urban. And most of my consulting work is basically anywhere in between from, you know, communities with 500 people to, you know, 200,000. And so, so that's kind of it briefly.
I don't have anything at this time. Questions, do you?
Nope. I'd just say the same thing. Thank you for your interest, and thank you for your gluttony, I should say. We appreciate it, and the town of Norfolk is grateful to both of you for your willingness to serve the town.
I wish we would find somebody with some more relevant experience.
I don't, it's embarrassing. How much she doesn't have any.
I think I'm going backwards in life. They used to pay me hourly for this.
Well, it's funny, because when Tyler was talking, and he was saying, oh, there's only one, if there was only one spot, I would, you know, of course I wouldn't. And I was like, all right, guy, enough with the sunshine up the skirt, right? Like, it's fine. And then she starts talking, and I'm like, oh, he's not kidding. Like, she's, she's got like...
And I only heard half of her presentation from the zoning board being too, and I was like, no, that's enough.
I did have a serious question, though. Ms. Starling, when did you move to Norfolk?
I moved in on September 24th.
Oh, like a few weeks ago? Like six weeks ago?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. I was, I was actually in touch with Rich and Betsy prior. I've been working in the area, like I said, I've been working in the area for a while, and so I'd actually run into Rich in my prior life, and so I had gotten in touch to see what was, what might be available upon arrival and jumped on it since it was obviously time sensitive.
Fantastic. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that we haven't been going five years without having a resource like this able to contribute to discussions.
How would we missed you? I guess a question I would have, that's a great question, and probably will haunt Tyler with it as well, but in terms of when came to the town, but I guess my question, I, I don't know, it was something that sort of came up last summer, having nothing, I don't even think it was a ZBA. Might have been a ZBA? I don't know. Yeah, but there was, sometimes there's folks who come before the board to be put on committees, and they'll, and people will say, well, they have an agenda. Well, okay, everybody has an agenda. You can come with whatever agenda there is. But when you sort of look deeper, prior to coming and seeking to come on the board, how was it that they were sort of interacting with people? Were they, you know, above board and friendly, or at least not, you know, mean and blowing their, I can't remember what it was this last summer. There was some shenanigan that, that I thought, mm, I don't know that, I think that that's a great way to handle your, you know, disputes with neighbors. Of course, we have them, but, but not me, other people. And so I guess, how do you formulate that into a question? But in terms of when, if someone were to come, you know, before the ZBA that you knew, would, how they sort of interacted, I'm just trying to think about the best way to put it. Have, if you knew that something you were doing, if you found out something you were doing was not, it wasn't inappropriate for wherever you were doing it, like, it wasn't zoned for that, like, I don't know, you were operating a liquor world in, in a neighborhood, and it's not zoned for that. How, what would the appropriate response be to learning that you needed to shut down your speakeasy? From your position, from your, as a potential member of a board, how do you think it would be appropriate for a towns person? And do you then think that that would should be relevant if they then came before your board? How they reacted?
Do you want to take it, or me, Tyler, do you want to take it?
I think it's for both. I think either one of you can, I think I'm interested to see, like, if, if someone like blows up and refuses to change and then shows up before the board, do they, should they receive the same parity? I think probably, but I just, I think it's an interesting question. How do we respond? Or how do we treat people, whatever? So I think it's for both of you, but if you want to go first, because you started, sure.
Okay, so I would, you know, in that case, I would probably obviously rely on someone with the experience and probably having had the conversations like that before. But for me personally, I would, I think everyone, regardless of in the right or in the wrong, should be treated with respect, you know, kindness. You know, there's, there's a way to be direct and, and to the letter, but also in a way that doesn't make people resent you or, and/or the board or the town or anything like that. So, you know, a clear explanation. We try to operate from the principle of clear is kind. And so if you were clear about expectations, clear about reasonings, clear about, well, this is what it says, and this is exactly why, and that sort of thing, that it may be direct, and it may not be the answer that they want to hear, but it is in fact the best way to be kind to that person and respectful of that person as a person.
Sounds pretty good.
Okay, I have more of a process answer to that. If it's a zoning violation, yeah, if it's a zoning violation, then it's an enforcement issue. If somebody came to me as a board member, either to dime somebody out for a zoning violation, or I was just aware of it, the proper channels to go through, first you make your chair aware of the situation, and you confer with them. But then you take it back to staff, because ultimately, that's the building commissioner, who's the zoning enforcement officer, who would be the one doing the investigation into whether or not there's a violation. As a board member, people will always come to you with problems or situations, some trying to get, you know, seeking, you know, perceived advantage. If there's, you know, a, if there's such a situation, you know, obviously, I always say we treat everybody equally badly. It's the line of one of my favorite building commissioners, but it's, you know, yes, you treat people with respect, but you also, you know, you stick to the rules and you stick to the process. This is government. There's a way that, you know, these issues are resolved that don't involve having board members having a lot of personal skin in the game. And so, you know, should, you know, should such a situation arise where there's some difficulty or that, where, you know, there may be what would appear to be a conflict of interest, then, you know, you always err on the side of caution to disclose what you think the conflict might be, and you can always recuse or abstain should it come before the board. And so in terms of, you know, I think of it, it's really more of an ethics question than anything else. And, you know, per ethical standards, there's kind of a way to handle it. You work through your board, you work through the staff. That's kind of my thought on it. And frankly, don't get personally involved if you don't have to.
Right. I think that that nail, sort of, when you said the ethical piece, all of a sudden I was reminded of all those videos that you have to watch.
Oh, my favorite, yeah.
Buttons, but I actually think that she should be on every board now, basically. Do you, having done a better job of formulating my question than I did, do you have any conflicts that you know of right now that, you know, would prevent you, would require you to recuse in a particular situation on the board? Is there anything you think should be changed with zoning that actually impacts you, your pecuniary interest?
Not me personally. Anywhere a potential conflict for me would come in is if I have the same applicant before me professionally, in which case I would recuse.
And the same question for you, Tyler. Is there anything that you think that should be, is, would be something you would like to see changed with zoning that would impact your pecuniary interest?
The only thing that we currently have in process in town is the site plan approval, the existing condition site plan approvals for Rockwood property. And so I don't have any, any other, any other issues personally that I think would come up.
Yeah, that's a planning, okay. That was, that was basically it, sort of what we had kind of expanded. All right, I have nothing further. Do you guys have any?
Nope.
Nothing for mine.
Thank you. So now we have the four things we have to vote.
I move that the board vote to appoint Courtney Starling and Tyler Tulos. Uh, Tulos?
Tulos.
Well, how do you prefer?
Tulos.
Tyler, Tulis, Tyler Tulis, as associate members to the zoning board of appeals, both for terms ending June 30th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? When do we need to see the clerk by to get sworn in?
Five minutes ago.
I hope your clerk is not around.
She was here.
Just left.
Bless her heart. She will find you. No, I'm just kidding.
You'll get the letter from our office, and then you just need to see her before the first meeting so you can act when you are seated.
Great, thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Courtney. Thank you, Tyler.
So item number seven is... Item number seven is the ADA plan that we discussed. We had a presentation on that in late September. As a result of that, we put the plan on our website and advertised it for 30 days, with the process leading to any public comments that we might receive about it that the board consider, could consider before adopting the plan. We did receive a comment. It's in your packet from Catherine Zalis, who expressed her concern that the plan didn't include an automatic, you know, button to automatically open the doors into the COA building for access. Just to give you some background on that, when the COA was built 20 years ago, it was built with a doorbell, which would ring someone inside to let someone know, please come out and help someone who's trying to come in. That actually meets the ADA requirement, did then and does now, even though it's maybe not the most accessible way, or maybe people don't feel as comfortable with it. So myself, along working with Sherri and with Matt, come up with a plan to replace it anyway, even though it's not required, and that is in process. I think the parts are ordered, and we're gonna use the state formula grant to pay for it. So that was the only comment that came in, and that's our response to that. So having no other comments that we've received, I would suggest that if the board's ready to vote to approve the plan, then that will become our plan moving forward. We did get all of the Excel spreadsheets for the couple hundred pages of things that were identified, and we're gonna undertake a process with facility staff to slowly work on implementing those, you know, the easy ones that staff can handle, and then prioritize the others. And then lastly, I would say, in the list of transfers for town meeting, we have identified $10,000 that we want the town meeting to approve us to use to go out and do the design work so we can start on the priority one items and apply for a state grant to do the entrance ways into Olive Day and the library. Those are the most public buildings that we think of, of all of them, that get the most traffic. And the state has grants of up to $250,000 a year. I think we'll probably be in the neighborhood of about 100 to do those two projects, but they look favorably, more favorably on projects that have matches. So a little bit of town money to get that design work done, so we'd be ready to go if we get the grant to get the work done. That's what, everything I have to cover on that topic, unless you have any questions.
I don't have any questions other than, so we would be just voting tonight to approve what we, the presentation, what was presented.
Approve the plan.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. I thought the presentation was pretty comprehensive, and I think that you're, that the point about asking for the automatic door and the decision to do it, I think, was the right one. And so I don't have any questions, do you?
No, I really appreciate that you listened to that. First, that we asked for public comment, and we listened, and even though we weren't in compliance, we went above and beyond as a town.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that that happened, and no, it seems great. And again, I also appreciate I don't have the 200-page packet.
I mean, actually, my compliments go to Sherri and Matt for figuring out how to get it done. That's all them. Uh-uh. I'm glad that they did, and, and I'm not sure when it will actually be done. Do you have any sense?
I think that's a four to six week timeline, hopefully before the first bill.
Excellent.
Well, I hate to have somebody join us and not share any kind of perspective or insight that they might have on the content. Sherri, was there anything from your perspective that you wanted to share in terms of the plan, or any other feedback that you might have collected from those who are coming through the COA who maybe didn't want to share with the board? Thank you.
Sometimes people are fine with not sharing. So I see no more comments. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board vote to adopt the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan of town-wide facilities effective November 2nd, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number eight?
So we will try to report to you on a somewhat regular basis of how we're doing.
Excellent.
So we don't do this a lot, but occasionally we get suggestions, requests for letters of support. So we have two in your packet. The first one is the state, the MMA is looking for the legislature to take some of the largesse of this past year, their revenues were robust, and put it towards Chapter 90 funding for roads and bridges. And so there is a, the alert that came from MMA, you may have received it directly, suggesting that that be proposed for Norfolk. It would mean additional almost $400,000 in funding. And unlike other Chapter 90 requests, this doesn't require a tax or some type of way to raise the money. The money is already there, and they're just suggesting to the state this would be a great way to spend it. Staff doesn't disagree with Chapter 90 money that we would normally get next year, 200, our share of 200 million, the money we're gonna put in at town meeting next week, this would, this in addition would go as to $1 million, which would be a real first and really help us move the needle, at least to, you know, gain a little ground and not lose any more. So our recommendation is to, to support it. And then the second item, got a letter from the manager of Arlington, who was asking for fellow administrators or boards to consider a net, supporting a net-zero stretch code, that the state to work on that in the era of, you know, more information about climate change and what it means. This wouldn't actually set up that, but it would at least let people know that that's a concern. I also reached out to the assistant building official, Jonathan Ackley, and asked him, well, from a building perspective, what's it mean? And his email is in here, and he probably correctly points out that construction would likely get more expensive. How expensive, what it would really mean to Norfolk is hard to say. So this is more of a, you know, this is less concrete than the Chapter 90. And I think there's very much sides to this, to the equation, but I wanted to ask you what you thought. So if you're interested in supporting that, we basically modeled the letter that he sent, the manager of Arlington sent for the board to support, or not.
All right, so, but they're both in one motion.
They could be separated. You know, certainly I wrote them that way, but, you know, it's always just, it's recommended. It's not necessarily what the board decides to do.
So I'm gonna break them out, just... So I'm going to break them out just because I think it's easier to talk about one at a time. And in terms of the state Chapter 90 funding, the request is for, is it for, is the surplus revenue surplus because of grants from the federal government due to the pandemic?
No, I think it's simply much better than expected state revenues. Certainly, tax revenues were a lot higher than they had planned. And so the MMA is suggesting that you can take a part of that. You can still put a whole bunch in the rainy day fund and do other things. But we'd like to see you spend 200 million of it in cash to distribute per the formula to all the communities in the state.
And so is there, this is the part that I'm like, what, if any downside is there for Norfolkians in terms of supporting this?
A little bit of during construction, if it's.
Oh, no, I was just talking about like in terms of is there sort of a backside to the issue?
Not that I, no, I can't.
The monies won't be available for schools or for, do you know what I mean?
Nope.
I just don't feel like I have enough information to be signing.
I mean, there's separate other, there's also there's ARPA funds coming. And as a matter of fact, we got a letter, I got an email from Senator Roush's office today wanting to know if we could turn in some ARPA priorities by Thursday. And I'm like, whoa, what magnitude, what type? We're, we're working on that, but we hadn't, we haven't nailed that down yet. This would be separate. And I actually had reached out to MMA because it's been a little bit confusing. They also had another bill going along that had 50 million in it. And I said, wait a second, I thought you wanted us to support 200. Now you're talking about 50. He's like, actually, they're two separate things. We're voting on 50 last week. You can still send your letter in for the 200 if you want, so.
Okay, I think that I understand and that, of course, it sounds great. I think that my concern was just sort of, even as I read it, it's sort of like a, hey, we just discovered all this extra money that we need to decide about really super quick. And I want good roads, but I am always.
I think this is a, hey, legislature, you could do something with this. We're pushing you to do it. Would you do, you know, and so we're trying to gather letters of support to get you to say yes to divert 200 million to go to cities and towns. And they may not, but that depends on, I think, how much of support they get.
And so just leaving it at, talking about the Chapter 90 funding first. Anita, do you have any questions, comments?
No, it seems like something we should encourage them to do. And I think it sounds like, um.
Yeah, it does, unless there's no.
There's no skin off our nose depending. And it seems like a great thing to encourage to happen, so Chapter 90, I'm all good.
Kevin?
I can only begin to imagine how many people have ideas about how to utilize surplus funding at the state level. I'm sure there's going to be a plethora of things that they're going to be trying to navigate as we go through the next few weeks and months. But, you know, if you talk about the things that have direct impact on Norfolk, I think Chapter 90 is a big one, given the status of our roads and how we're kind of scraping by each year. Much like you, I thought about, tried to find other ways that are being proposed to utilize the surplus funds at municipal level, whether it be, you know, making an ETS for you or something like that.
Right, yeah, more senior access to the.
But I could not find anything that would more directly impact our community than this. So to that end, I would support this.
And so to the extent that we can decide it after we talk about the other one in terms of breaking it down, but from, from my, from my vantage point, then I would be supportive of a, of a letter of support. I would not, however, be supportive of a letter of support regarding the stretch code at this time without more information. I recall the numerous times that people have come in front of us with local stretch code and it's not going to cost anything and it's going to be unicorns and magic, so amazing, and then it isn't. And, and if that's, if you have the information and you decide that that's important with all of the information, okay. But just to be like, no, we're not really sure how it's going to impact the building that people like Kevin just spent, I don't know how much time, trying to come up with a balance in order to entice people to come and build, including with, you know, with options and opportunities for affordable, but yet still make it like they're, I'm not, I'm not, you know, thanks, but I'm not ready to.
Oh, sure, I understand.
That's just kind of my perspective on the second one, at least at this juncture. Maybe that, they come with more information, fine. But right now, I just want people to be able to build good stuff pursuant to what the folks did in their current, whatever, that's my, that's my feeling. But I'm just one member, so. Anita?
I, I have really mixed feelings about it. I feel like climate change is real and it's going to affect our children, right? And so every, every little decision, I was thinking about it today, driving to work, like we need to get a, we need to get an electric car. I drive so much, I maybe need to get an electric car. And so it is a real thing that we need to consider. That being said, I, I like the idea of stretching and it, but I do believe there's no way that we can have a stretch code without having it cost the town money. And then that, is that an Anita decision or a town decision? And so I have some conflicting feelings about it because I feel like, should we have a stretch code? Absolutely, yes, we should have a stretch code. If we don't stretch, who's going to stretch, right? And it's not something that one person can do or two people. It, all the communities need to do that to make a difference. On the other hand, we have a budget, we have to live within our budget. If we make decisions to spend more money or decisions that cost us money, it impacts our town as well. Not supporting climate change will also impact our town. It just won't impact our town today. And so it will impact our town at some point. And so this is where do we sort of think short or think long? And I, and I know the right answer.
Which is why I candidly punted, but I was like, we need more information. I'm not really good at punting. Over to you.
So, please correct me, but I believe this already was passed through the state legislature and given to the governor who vetoed it earlier in the year, right? And what they're asking for now is to, for their governor to reconsider or they're going to push it through the legislature again and then have it go before him again.
This is just a letter of support, I understand that.
Right. So, I mean, I think from my perspective, you know, obviously to Anita's point, this is a very important issue that needs attention and requires anything that we can do to mitigate impacts in the future. That being said, I also believe that as part of this package, there is an option for municipalities to opt in. You're not being forced to do this.
That's correct.
So a town can decide at some point, even if this is passed, if this is something that they want to opt into or not opt into. But to Cece's point, there are so many unknowns about the actual costs associated to implementing something like this. In order for us to be able to achieve much of the growth that we're looking to achieve, we can't really risk unknowns having, being a hindrance to us be able to achieve that stuff. We have a master plan that we're working on again, we just did rezoning for our town center. We're going to be instituting an economic development committee to get the businesses that we want in town. I just feel like we took a big step when we talked about the stretch code the first time back in 2018. Now I think that we should focus on executing on some of these things and then having a more robust assessment once we get to a point where there's some actualities associated to the proposal. So while I support the stretch code, I support the net zero movement, I look forward eagerly to more definition being surrounding it and for Norfolk to be in a better place to be able to wholeheartedly support an initiative like that.
There you go.
That's, that's perfectly fine. I, I assume that that's how this would fall and that's sometimes why we bring them to you because you're the policymakers.
You want to put it on our radar for things to think about and answers to get going forward. Like, you can have, they don't, the, the goal of increasing housing for disadvantaged populations doesn't have to be working in conflict with the goal of protecting as much as you can against the erosion of the infrastructure due to climate change and as, and as well as the goal of increasing tax dollars from sources other than individuals in order to improve education. Like, they don't all have to always be in conflict. Sometimes they are. But until you have the information, I think that it isn't. To Kevin's point, there was like a ton of work that really kind of was, is important work that was done. I just don't think we have enough information.
Sure, understood.
So we'll kick the can on that one.
It's my favorite.
Consider it kicked.
But do we need to vote on the other one or, oh, this is just?
Just vote on the, if, they vote on the Chapter 91?
So we need to, and so.
So just vote on the Chapter 91, just amend the motion.
Friendly amendment.
Okay, I move that the board vote to authorize the chair to execute letter, a letter of support for additional chapter, state Chapter 90 funding.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Item number nine, so as you recall, early this year, we applied for a state public health excellence grant with Rentham and Franklin, and we won that grant, $300,000 a year for the first three years and proud to say that the group is off and running. We have a nurse, you know, every Wednesday at the COA and I know that's working out awesome. And also, we jointly hired a public health agent, Matt Tanis, who we share with the other two towns and he's here a day a week, which was, is already so much more than we had before and doing great work. And so one of the steps in forming this group is to have an understanding between the three communities about how, how we're working and what the, what the rules of the road are. So with the help of MAPC, who has been supporting us through this whole grant, is this memorandum of understanding to establish and maintain the Metacoma Public Health Alliance, which is what we're called. So this lays out the basic framework for that. We have asked you only to approve it through June 22 for a couple of reasons. We're still getting our sea legs, even though we're, I think, ahead of some of the other groups in the state with our, with our staffing and the work. We are going to continue to evolve and there's more that we're going to be looking at. We've actually already been contacted by the state to see if we would consider taking on other towns. So we want to go carefully, while the grant is for three years and we could just have done this through 2024, we'd actually prefer that you only approve it through 2022. And we keep working on it and bring it back to you for approval in the future.
And so this is all in terms of obligation, it's, it's the grant that's.
The only financial obligation that Norfolk has and it's spelled out in here is that we, we are contributing $20,000 a year to the nurse. That's not all of the cost. And we had already budgeted some money for nursing in our budget. We're actually using the ARPA funds, the CARES funds, and now the ARPA funds to make that payment in the next couple of years. But if the state wants to see districts formed and get bigger, I think there will be a, there will be a conversation about what, what revenue they can support that with going forward. Because I think we started with, you know, a nurse one day a week, plus a flu clinic and some other special events and, and, and activities. I know that Sheri's going to work with them on some of those. But we will probably want to do more in the area of the public health agent and we still have to talk about what we do about Title V in the future. So like I said, there's room to grow, we just need to start here.
And so the 20,000, you said that there was some in the budget. Is it going to require an amendment to the budget or is it sort of?
Not, no, because we're going to use the federal funds for now. And the good thing is it'll give us time to build it into our budget.
And maybe it says it, it says that the duly authorized chief executive officers.
So you, the board is the chief executive officer, I'm the chief administrative, which is why I'm asking for you to sign it rather than myself.
I don't have any other questions.
I think at some point we make it to the point of a district, kind of like the MECC, but we're not there yet.
I like the direction and I like the pace, but I just wanted to know something to you.
Have Franklin and Rentham approved it yet?
I think Franklin was supposed to do it this week and Rentham will probably do it last, yeah.
Thank you.
And in the event that they, is there, do you have any indication that they won't? Slash, in the event that they don't, what happens then?
Voting them out of the Commonwealth.
Other than, other than banishment.
We are, we are in this together. Let's put it this way, when, when we were going to first apply, we were going to apply Rentham and, and us and one other town and then one other town decided to drop out. We called Franklin and said, hi, you have a week to decide that you're going to join us on this journey. And they have, and so they hired a nurse, we've hired the agent together. It's really been exciting what we're.
So you don't see any, you think it would be unlikely that they wouldn't, but just to humor my pessimistic hypothetical, in the event that one of the towns said, yeah, pass, are we left holding any bag or is it like back to the drawing board?
I think it would be back to the drawing board because this, we, we ran to the state to get this grant for three towns. We have deliverables this year, we have measures of, of success that we have to report. Rentham has really taken the lead on running this for us. I'm, I'm, I'm supporting it along with Rich McCarthy, but it's not really, we're not doing much of the work. It's more about how quickly we grow and the last conversation we had was, it's wonderful that they think we're doing a great job and they'd like to take on more, but we need to make sure that we don't lose the level of, of effort that we have in each community and that we grow responsibly and can take that all on and that they're the right partners, because not everybody's the right partner, right? And so we need to work on that. So actually, I think we only have problems or growing pains really, not, not going the other way.
Kevin?
No questions, just maximizing resource efficiency through partnerships such as this are going to be very important as we move forward, especially coming out of the pandemic and what the next few years look like, so.
My understanding from the state is that, that if, if, if communities are not in, in alliances like this, they will not be eligible for more state funding. Like, that's what's the way, the direction the state wants it to go. So it behooves groups to work together.
So do we have a motion?
I move that the board authorize the town administrator to execute. That's not what it said.
How about, I forgot to change that, authorize the chair.
I move that the board authorize the chair to execute a memorandum of understanding for the Metacoma Health Alliance.
Sorry about that.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This memo of understanding, right? Not any old memo of understanding.
Well, there's a lot of memos of understanding that I'm.
Right, now I'm going to start authorizing.
Going crazy.
A little back and forth again, this thing done last week, so sorry about that.
Number 10?
So number 10, we wrote this for you last week and put in your packet the proposed order for the two dogs owned by Ms. Ford, Maggie and Chance, based on the order for the dog hearing that the board had in 2020 because the requirements were the same. Obviously, different set of people and animals and testimony. Over just this morning, we learned that, and we're able to confirm that Maggie has been rehomed to a family in Windsock at Rhode Island and Chance has been euthanized late last week. So we quickly pivoted, spoke to town council and it was his suggestion that based on the, because we have new information that might affect the outcome of the order, that the board vote to reopen the hearing, to accept new evidence, obtain that evidence, see if anyone wanted to speak, and then close the hearing, deliberate and possibly approve the newest order that's in your packet and we sent you late today that would have, was basically the same, except for the outcome that there's, because one dog is no longer with us, that the order did not need to pertain to him in terms of what was required. Town council does still recommend that the board approve an order. He said it is not, it has happened in other communities in the past that an animal might be rehomed and then it has happened that an animal comes back. I'm not at all suggesting that will happen here, but it's in the town's best interest to have the order in place, a order in place so that if the animal comes back to Massachusetts or happens to come back to our community, we can either enforce it here or we can let the jurisdiction where the animal lives be aware of the order that we passed. Joining us by Zoom is ACO Cohen, who has been on this journey with me over the last few days going through all this. And she actually was the one who reached out to the family about Maggie, so she can confirm that for you. So if you want to change direction from what we teed up on Thursday, there are some motions in your, that we handed out, they're in your packet on the top and there is a revised order.
Is, is there any problem with shifting to reopening in terms of the amount of notice requirement as a, for open meeting or any?
No, the only thing the town council recommended was that I let Ms. Ford know that the board would be reopening the hearing in case she chose to come and provide any comments or testimony. I emailed her that this afternoon, she quickly responded and said that she was not, not in a position to provide anything else. She was, wasn't planning to come, and she understood.
So, then I think that we do that, we reopen the hearing and get it all done. So, I guess it would need a motion from the script of the ten.
I've lost track, is it me?
I don't know.
I move that the board vote to reopen the public hearing regarding the dog Maggie and Chance owned by Angelina Ford for the purpose of introducing two new pieces of information into evidence.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open, and so...
The two items of evidence are the email from Ms. Ford to ACO Cohen indicating that Maggie had been rehomed, and then the actual, which is in your packet right behind the motions, and then the certificate of death for Chance that was part of that email.
And when, and then, is it okay if we ask questions?
Of course, sure.
So, that would be the testimony piece, I guess?
So, you can swear her in and take her testimony?
Oh, because we closed evidence, because from the last time, she could still be considered sworn in, but because we closed evidence...
Well, you are, you are more...
So, I guess we'll...
More law, legal experience than I do.
I guess you can go day to day, because they're still under oath, but we'll just... Hillary, can you raise your, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, can you raise your hand?
Yeah.
She's back, can you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth this evening?
I do.
So, we see the certificate regarding Chance, and I haven't found the email, but that's... When did you learn about the change in status of the dog?
So, after our hearing last Monday, the next Tuesday, the next morning, I reached out to Angelina, and a couple of days went by, I did not hear back. So, Blythe reached out to Angelina, and I learned of the situation change this morning. When I got into work, an email was sent last night, and I just saw it this morning.
Do you, did you speak with her at all, or is it just the email that you saw?
Today, it was just, today, it was, oh, you mean after the initial hearing?
No, after, well, I guess at any point, but after you saw the certificate from the veterinarian, have you had an opportunity to communicate with Ms. Ford?
I have not.
So, do you have any sense as to, like, maybe it's in the email, and I just can't see it, as to what precipitated the decision for the euthanization? I mean, other than our meeting, obviously, but just was there, you know, an analysis done by an expert? Or any information regarding why it happened?
That I am unaware of as to why they chose this route. I do know of the veterinarian that handled the euthanasia, so I have not touched base with that veterinarian as of this point. I have touched base with the new owner of Maggie. I spoke with her on the phone today to confirm that Maggie is in Woonsocket, Rhode Island.
Did the owner, was the owner aware of the issues in mass, the new owner?
I did not breach that subject, and because I wanted to wait until everything was finalized, and if there is a need to go back and contact the new owner, I certainly will.
I just, I guess I was just curious if you got a sense of whether or not the new owner knew why Maggie was being rehomed? Because my recollection from last week was that what was presented to us from the owner, the then owner, was that she sought breed rescue and some of the friend of a friend type of thing from Maggie and breed rescue for Chance, which maybe what happened was breed rescue had a sense of likelihood of rehoming or recidivism. But there had been a representation made that she had let folks know what had happened, so that they were aware. And I was just curious if you got that sense at all from speaking with this woman, whether she knew why...
So, she was very understanding, she was very polite, she was very courteous on the phone. I believe, for my standpoint in my job, I would feel more comfortable just alerting Woonsocket Animal Control as to the legal findings that you guys have made.
So, she did not say anything to you that would indicate she knew that the dog had attacked another dog?
No.
I'm asking if you asked her, I'm asking if she offered anything up that would tell you that...
No.
I also remember that they, in working with the expert, they had been, it had been recommended to them that the dogs be separated, so I think there was some intention in the separation of the dogs.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think I have any questions.
You covered all the topics that I was looking to know about more, so.
Thank you.
So, I suggest the board vote to close the hearing, deliberate on the order, and then decide whether you want to approve the order or not.
So, do I have a motion, we're seeking now a motion to close the hearing again, correct?
I move that the board vote to close the public hearing regarding the dogs Maggie and Chance owned by Angelina Ford and begin deliberations.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, now deliberations.
So, basically, we took the order that you had received in your packet last week, and we changed the sections regarding the discussion end of that, and the recommended disposition. And we clearly state still that, you know, the board determined that they felt that both Maggie and Chance were dangerous dogs, but that now that Chance has been euthanized, is not with us anymore, that the findings actually only that Maggie is deemed a dangerous dog, and the five conditions that the board had decided last time to impose, we kept those the same. And they're singular now, referring to Maggie and not to Chance. And so, if the board approves this, then, like I said, we will let the Woonsocket Animal Control know about it, and should Maggie come back to this town, it would be imposed on Ms. Ford if she came there, or we would let any other community know that we became aware of that the dog was, what had happened. And we made some minor changes, such as the items of evidence became one longer with this new information, referencing the two sets of dates for minutes and the recording of the meeting, that sort of thing. I think that was pretty much, pretty much it. But I realize you haven't had any chance to review this new one, so you could approve it tonight, you could wait to approve it at an upcoming meeting as the board thinks it's appropriate.
So, from my perspective, and I'm happy if other people are more comfortable waiting for another night, but from my perspective, and I think that Kevin did a nice job of identifying that sense that I had that of the folks, of the dogs, the dog with a sort of a clear history of behavior that was erratic, unexpected, aggressive, was Chance, and that the only evidence of Maggie being vicious was the bite on Riley and some apocryphal testimony of her sort of being with Chance at the fence, at the door. Whether or not that meant that she was someone who would be independently that level of aggressive or not, I didn't have, I don't know that I would have had enough information to say with certainty that euthanasia would have been appropriate for Maggie. I certainly think it's appropriate that she is a dangerous dog. I think it is appropriate that she, that we, I'm comfortable voting tonight, but that if I were to vote tonight, I would vote that she be declared a dangerous dog, and that all of the prescriptions, other than neutering and euthanasia, so not five, not six, be...
Six and seven.
Six and seven, sorry, because it was a number seven, I'm a little bit hitting you. Not six, not seven, that one through five be employed. Is, is one of them, is the microchip still in there?
Yes.
Lifetime identification, number five, yeah.
Okay, so that would be my, what I would be comfortable doing. I don't know that I actually would be comfortable of the two dogs euthanizing where she's younger, and perhaps it has more to do with, you know, the bad crowd she was hanging around with, or, or just, you know, everybody has that propensity, if you're a reactive dog, and if you're in the right hands, like, she still has that opportunity to be trained. I don't know that she does, but I don't know that she doesn't, and so, that's what I would be comfortable with doing, is voting tonight. But, Anita?
I would be, I would also be comfortable voting tonight. I think the order is well-prepared, and it captures the evidence that was given in the, it's a good decision, I think. The thing that I'm concerned about is, I would like the, well, it says Maggie owned by Angelina Ford, and Maggie is no longer owned by Angelina Ford, but I don't know how that works in the motion, but I would like the new owner to have the order, not just the animal control officer, unless we know for sure the animal control, I want them to read what happened, and they know that that happened, so they know the, they know the possibility in this dog, right? I would like the new owner to be aware of what they have. It's kind, it's kind of like when you're a kid and you drive a car, and you don't realize that the car is a weapon, right, until you're in an accident, and then you realize that a car can be a powerful weapon in terms of... And so, I want them to realize that that dog has the potential for being a weapon. And hopefully, she lives happily ever after, and I hope that for her very much, but I would like the owner, I would like some assurances that the owner knows that this has happened.
We can certainly work to make that happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said. If you remember that night, that night, I had, in my mind, I had tried to separate the two entities.
That's why I was saying, I was sort of, that made, that really resonated, especially once I saw, when I saw what had happened in terms of Chance and Maggie, it really sort of brought it into more clear focus.
So, while, you know, the decision to order euthanasia is very difficult to do, it sounds like it was the appropriate action based on, you know, what happened thereafter. That being said, I do feel like orders one through five are appropriate for Maggie. Just to confirm, you know, we do not have the ability to order these to be carried out by her new order in Rhode Island. All we will be doing is notifying her that these orders were put forth because of what occurred here in Norfolk.
Correct. But should Maggie come back here?
It would be enforceable.
It would be enforceable, that the town could take that step. And if any other, if we become aware that she's brought to a different community in Massachusetts, we'll absolutely let that animal control office, that town know, so that it could be enforced there.
And is there a possibility that the animal, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Kevin, I apologize. The animal control officer in Woonsocket could also choose to bring that to their community and say, do we want to also, or no?
I don't know what the laws of Rhode Island are for dogs, they might be the same, they might be different, I don't have the answer to that. But they certainly, they don't have to follow it, because it's a, it's a different state. Certainly, awareness is important.
And I also feel comfortable with executing this tonight. I don't need to necessarily sit on this for another day or so.
So, the motion in the handout for tonight, not the one in the book from last week.
Again, I hate, well, I don't need a handout, because I'm not talking about the motion.
But it's in section ten, and it's okay that it says Maggie owned by Angelina Ford, because she was owned by Angelina Ford at the time of the hearing. I move that the board vote to approve the issuance of the written decision and order that the dog named Maggie, owned by Angelina Ford, be designated as a dangerous dog.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we have a guest tonight, we have...
Sorry, one second, thank you so much, Hillary.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you.
Sherri is here, we don't often get to have the chance to spend time with...
We don't often get to see you awake this late.
And we appreciate it. So, it was on the board's list of goals to talk about senior programs and things for seniors, and so, this was when Sherri said, hey, can I come see the board in, you know, next month? I said, absolutely. So, in your packet is a short outline from Sherri about two senior programs that she wants to go over with you, and then she's got just good news, just general good news.
It's all good, well, primarily, I just wanted to refresh your memories of what exists now in the property tax relief arena, and we have some initiatives that I just want to update you on, and then whatever questions you have, I'm here to answer them for you. So, I think you're aware, we have a senior tax workoff abatement program, and it was last enhanced in 2009, so the COA board voted to enhance it again. The current maximum allowed for credit is fifteen hundred, we're now at seven fifty. So, as of January, because this program runs on a calendar year, the fifteen hundred credit is going to be what people can earn by working in town departments for credit on their property tax. We also, during my tenure, we raised the minimum, the hourly rate to match with the minimum wage. And so, I gave you those figures, and so, obviously, the more you make, and the more we are offering, the more hours, and you have to do the math. So, the funding of this program, as I tell you here, is at ten thousand. Unfortunately, we don't have a huge participation in this program, and with COVID, that dropped even further. But what we're hoping is that with the increased amount, and we do some marketing, that we'll get more people interested, and we're also going to be doing more to try to get more jobs for them, now that things are opening up again. The COA and the library, they're primary employers, if you will, and then we have people who do project-based work here at Town Hall. And as you, any questions on the workoff program? So, the elderly and disabled tax fund, as you recall, was voted at town meeting in June, and again, I just reiterated what that law speaks to. It's a five-person committee that's formed by statute, it's the town treasurer, as well as the chair of the Board of Assessors, and then you all appoint three residents who express interest in being on the committee. And then it's really the committee that determines the criteria and the process. My intent in putting that on the warrant for town meeting is to offer, again, another tool in the toolkit to help people with tax relief. The current exemptions, which the assessors are going to be talking to you about later this month, I think you're aware, they're pretty low. Income and asset needs tested, and so, very few people participate, they don't qualify, but every year, you know, the department assessing gets a lot of requests. So, this gives the flexibility, if the committee determines what more generous common asset I love. And again, it's based on how much money is going to be donated to the fund, so it's going to evolve over the next, you know, year term, probably two years before we get enough money to sort of make it worthwhile. But again, it's one more, one more offering to show, you know, goodwill, effort that we hear you, yes, we're working on it, and, you know, help people stay in their homes. Anything about, any more about taxes? Okay, so, other things going on, and this is the time now, Kevin, you asked me if there anything else you want to talk about in the ADA report. So, I think you recall, I'm coming up on my three years, year of three-year anniversary, and you were on the committee that hired me, and remember, I mentioned the parking lot needs to be improved, well, the parking lot still needs to be improved. And so, it's a concern, we did good news, we did get a forty thousand dollar state earmark for the design of the new parking lot. Not bad news, but what that also did was delay our pavilion project a little bit. Recall, again, we went to CPA for money for the pavilion, which was granted, appreciate that. And the pavilion is going to be in the parking lot, so the initial idea was to do, you know, kill the two birds with one stone, and get one design for the two, but we don't, we want to keep the money clean, so the current, the design is going to be scoped separately, the pavilion and the parking lot. We don't have to pay separately, but again, so that we can track the money, it's going to be scoped separately.
I signed the grant form today.
Good news, self-pity, more good news. So, you know, the issue as it relates to the ADA, there have been other complaints about, you know, the number one priority in that report is access and safety. the number one priority in that report is access and safety. The parking lot has access and safety issues. So the design is great, but we still have to find the money to fix the problem. We don't have enough handicap spaces. People want to park close to the building because it's more convenient. It's difficult to walk across the parking lot, particularly one that's, you know, needs some repair. So at least once a week, we're asking people to move cars because they're blocking the fire lane or the truck that has to deliver the meals on wheels can't get by. And so we need to find the money to, to fix that as soon as possible. We can look for some grant money, but if there are other sources of money, I would love to, you know, move that up the priority list. Anything else about parking lot or pavilion?
May I ask you a question? Is the parking lot on the ADA report, the COA parking lot?
It probably is, but I didn't memorize it all. I'd have to go back and check.
There was something that just talked about, it's not in that report, there's another beta, beta report?
It's in the beta, so that's what she's referring to. It probably is. I mean, I know some of the things like the cracks in the sidewalks we're working on, Matt's working on now. But as soon as we get the design done and we know what, you know, the scope is and how much it's going to cost, then we can identify the money to actually do the work. So that's the plan.
So, you know, it, again, not a bad thing to get $40,000 from the state. But we had done a sidewalk, Rich McCarthy and I with the designer in the summer. I was foolishly optimistic that we were going to be well underway. But again, we got the money from the state, so we had to put that off a little bit. There is, you know, Rich is great at looking for grant money. And hopefully we'll have the designs, we can go after some grant money. There's green infrastructure, for example, money that we can look to, or maybe some of those opera funds. So the Gatter Van, da-da-da-da, we have a Gatter Van from the parking lot in the Town Hall. I'm not sure if you've seen it. No pun intended, it's going to be a slow rollout because we don't have anyone to drive it yet. But again, it's one of those things that was delayed with COVID. We signed the contract with Gatter for July 1st. We just got, we just picked the van up last week. And our driver has been, does mandatory trainings to drive the Gatter Van. So hopefully those will be finished this week. And then we have to do a first aid and CPR certification and then a person will be able to drive the van. So I'm going to have the new driver ride with Ray in Betsy. And Betsy is the 20-passenger van that the COA with friends' donation bought five, six years ago. Not handicap accessible, so that's one of the reasons why I really wanted to get the Gatter Van at our disposal. And also just have flexibility to do our own dispatch. And it's an eight-passenger van, originally total 12, it's eight. That'll do, brand new, it's beautiful. And hopefully we'll have that on the road, you know, the full schedule by the first of the year. That's it? Any questions, comments?
No, thank you for all this work for our seniors. I think that's fabulous and opportunities to support them to stay in their home and to help them to continue to live in Norfolk, that's fabulous.
Thank you.
I do have a question on the tax abatement program. Do you happen to know how many individuals currently take advantage of this program?
You're talking about the work off?
Yep.
So we're down to six.
Six individuals.
That's half of what it was last year. And we lost a couple the year before. So, and, you know, but to be honest, I haven't done a whole lot of, well, COVID. But even before that, not a whole lot of marketing because, you know, we didn't have a lot of jobs and I didn't want to advertise something we couldn't deliver on. So again, we enhance it, we advertise it, we grow it, that's the goal.
That was going to be my follow-up was how do people learn about this more? And it sounds like you have a plan to really roll that up.
We do. I mean, we, I mean, I think the Department of Assessors does a good job with the exemptions. And, you know, we kind of work hand in hand on some of that, but we'll advertise it.
Well, that would be a huge influx because she's now on YouTube, on the select board meeting, the thousands of people watching.
Right, right, right.
Thousands is a new word for a long. It's one of these new mass things.
And again, they're not awake right now.
They're not awake, but they can watch it later. They can watch it later.
And I'm going home to my bed.
We've got a follow-up to advertise the three positions on the elderly tax work off, elderly and disabled tax fund to get three people to be, for you guys to appoint to them to add to the treasurer and the chair of the board of assessors so that group can get going and doing that work. And then making a more of an effort through Sherri to advertise the senior work off program.
We started working with NCTV on a senior, a savvy senior series. And we've, so we've done, I do my Medicare seminar and we're doing, we'll do one on taxes, we'll do one on transportation, housing. So that's, you know, the idea is we'll, you know, kind of package that so people can look at it later. And it's not, you know, it's not just the seniors themselves, it's often the family members. What do you got? How can I help my, my parent or my friend or my neighbor? Norfolk's great that way, you know, we look out for each other.
Thank you so much, Sherri.
Right, thank you.
It's already been three years.
Yeah, she started about a few months before I did.
Number 12?
So number 12. So now that we are, been doing this a little bit, we're in our cycle of quarterly financial reports. So the same three that you've been getting are in your packet again. We have the one-page overview of revenues and expenses. The very detailed sheet from Todd about revenues this year comparative to last year. And the transfer station report. Overall, the revenues are first quarter of the year slightly ahead of projections, just 26, almost 27% versus 25. And we can go through what, some of those details of what those are. And expenses are just under 28%. Just a reminder, there are a couple of things like pension obligations and insurances that we pay upfront in the beginning of the year to save some money by early payments. So that's why it's usually higher than 25%. But overall, I mean, I think the town is doing very well. We've got some interesting numbers in the revenue area. Tax liens, we've already brought in 72,000 that we never budget each year. The meals tax, I think, is catching up. And licenses and permits continues to be strong. We budgeted 425, we brought in almost 160 in the first quarter. So building continues to be strong. And so I think we're very much on track this year. And on the transfer station side, we are, I think, I would say that we're doing well there too. We have brought in, in the first quarter, almost 71,000. It's about 12,000 higher than it was for the same quarter last year, which I would attribute mostly to the fact that we hadn't rolled the new bags out in July 1st last year. It took until into August before those really became the main way that people bought for the, bought the ability to get rid of their trash. So I think that's part of it. I also know we've been having occasionally additional, someone at the gate making sure everybody has a membership. And we think one day they sold 12 for peoplehood and we didn't. So we're on a spot basis, making sure that's happening. And expenses are slightly under expended because we haven't touched any of the monies for site services yet this year. So I think, and as you recall, no change in the cost of bags or memberships or anything. So overall, I think that's good news. So I just, that's what I have to tell you about all those. I don't know if you have any questions?
Nope. You? Kevin?
Steak exceptions. Very, very low actual last year, very, very in line with expectations this year.
Todd actually pointed out to me, and thank you for noticing that, for some reason, we actually didn't get the monies we were supposed to get last year and it's all come in this year. So that's odd that that happens, but for some reason it did. But I would like to take a moment just to give Todd a shout-out. You know, he's not here, but it's great that there was monies for CARES and ARPA and FEMA reimbursements. But it has taken an awful lot of work for him to keep on top of all that paperwork. The FEMA reimbursements, he has to enter invoice by invoice. How many sets of PPE did we buy? How much per unit?
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, he's sitting in front of stacks. And so I just, he doesn't complain, he gets it all done. And I just want you to know that he's doing an awesome job at all of that and keeps all the balls in the air and tells me everything's fantastic. So I just wanted to tell you. So thank you for letting me talk.
That's everything I had. Todd's greatly appreciated, thank you.
Yeah.
Paragraph 13, any updates?
A couple of things. The Fire Department Excellence Award that, you know, we heard about, but we didn't know the details.
The one that Kevin just kept asking about?
Yep.
Nobody, nobody knows what it is. You sure? How about this week, that one?
So we do know. The, it's an award for our cooperation and response during the pandemic. And especially the department had responded to a prisoner who had barricaded themselves on the roof at one point.
How did he get on the roof?
Not really sure. Don't have the details, but the response to help and get that person to come down and be safe was.
Slash not escape, I mean.
That too, not get hurt, not escape, all good. The bad news is because of some things just going on at the prison and COVID vaccines and all that sort of thing, they've had to put off the actual award ceremony, but they will reschedule it. So that's what, that's what that was all about. So I want to tell you about that. Town meeting procedures, it's a week from tomorrow. Shout-out for everyone watching and listening.
The thousands.
The thousands, yes.
Yeah, there'll be even, there'll be even more of that.
Have you all gotten your warrant yet at home?
Yep.
Okay, good. So just a reminder to people, the bylaws are on the website. We will have lots of copies of the two bylaws at the meeting in case people hadn't gone to the website to read them ahead of time.
They're at the clerk's office.
Clerk's office, they're at the COA, they're at the library. Thank you to Amanda. She got her first tour of some of those places going on. Go find the COA in the library and drop stuff off. Because we'll be in a school building, masks will be required of everyone. We're going to update the website with some of that later this week, just to remind people. No distancing requirements now, but just, I suggest to people to, you know, maybe sit far apart if you can just to be safe with the 13th person, 13 article warrant. Hopefully it's not a long meeting, but looking forward to that. And we did pick a company for the website, Revise. They have done a number of websites in the state. And so we're looking forward to kicking off with them and bringing a design to you. If any of you have ideas of websites you love, websites you hate, things you really want to see, please share because we want to, you know, this is an awesome opportunity to update it and offer things we've never offered before. And so we're looking for feedback. You know, thoughts, do you like a website that's really clean and not a lot on it? Or do you like a website that has a lot of things? Some websites have beautiful pictures as a background with things on top of them. You know, any thoughts you have about that will help inform us about what to do so we can bring forth a design that people can get excited about. So I'm excited. We use the ARPA funds to pay for it.
Excellent.
Yeah, so.
And Todd's going to enter that manual?
Probably.
I have some pennies that I'm going to bring for him to count. He really likes detailed work. Anything else or any questions?
Nope.
Kevin?
No, just while we were talking about the fire station award, I did attend the online presentation of the IT cybersecurity award as well.
This shocks nobody in the room, or the 10,000.
Super exciting, by the way.
10,000 people, I just increased our viewership.
But just to throw some clarity to what that was, that was given out by the Executive Department of Cybersecurity and Information Technology for the state. They awarded that to 34 communities, or was one of them, obviously. And during the presentation, they did call out our IT director, Tan, by identifying how great he was in keeping in contact with them and engaging with them over the course of the presentation in the training period. So I want to give him a shout-out as well for being recognized by the state.
I thought, two other quick things. One, the fire station building committee is having their community preview event tomorrow night, 6 o'clock. Be there or be square. Learn about the project, learn about the existing conditions of the building, take a tour, ask questions. Tell us things you like, don't like, want to know more about. We're looking to get a following and of people to follow the project. So come on out, come on out tomorrow night.
KP football, KP, little guy, eighth grade football game tomorrow.
Hmm.
My fourth guy, the white team versus the green team, they both made the playoffs. Both from Team Phillips, so that's where, that's where I'll be watching. From a friend, eighth grade football friends, but.
Wait, so it's KP versus KP in the first round of playoffs?
So in, yeah.
Well, it's.
Yeah. So we had enough kids, because we had enough kids to fill two teams at, for the eighth grade. And sometimes, some years, there are other towns like who have had two teams and we've only had one. And so they just put both teams into the sort of the mix and they end up playing some of the same people, et cetera. And they both won their games and so, yeah, tomorrow night they're playing each other.
Hope that's a lot of both teams.
Okay, first of luck, friend Willie Doolby and all his friends.
I'm all set.
All right, great. So I guess that brings us to the warrants. Anybody who wants to give us a motion on the warrants as printed?
I was in victory formation over there.
I move that the board approve four warrants for the period October 19th, 2021 through October 26th, 2021, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes?
I move that the board approve the meeting minutes of September 21st, October 5th, and October 25th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any last-minute motions about anything relative to egress that we would like to?
I move that we close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.